Call a regular meeting to order at 4:30, call to order at this time and we're going to ask for the invocation and pledge of allegiance and I'm going to ask Mr. Perez to lead us in this.
Yes, we can please stand for the invocation, pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance as we begin this meeting. Fill us, fill us with your grace as we make decisions for our community. Continue to remind us that we do here today and all we accomplish is for the greater glory of you and for the service of our residents. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Heart.
Pledge of allegiance. Into the Republic of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
The mayor has heard 4:30.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Employee of the month, Ms. Gugia, you have the presentation number one.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we'd like to present to you our employee of the month for February of 2021. Mr. David Chapa, our diesel mechanic was selected. I'd like to ask him to please come up there.
Mr. Chapa, please approach the bench, please, so the public will see you on the... Yes.
I'm going to go ahead and read the nomination. His wife has joined him as well. Mr. Chapa serves as a diesel mechanic for the city of Mission. His duties include servicing the Mission Fire Department. Upon his start, he quickly and without hesitation began by surveying the fleet and performing preventive maintenance on all units. In doing so, he created a plan of action that would correct concerns before they became serious issues. Over time, the Mission Fire Department fleet began to see less and less failures and the fleet's downtime was shortened. Mr. Chapa has also been called to respond to various fire scenes to assist with mechanical issues. In December of 2020, the Mission Fire Department responded to a neighboring county to lead rescue efforts of a four-year-old boy trapped in a well. At the scene, one of the rescue trucks being used to provide light stopped working hours into the long operation. Mr. Chapa was transported to the scene by emergency vehicle and upon arrival quickly evaluated and corrected the problem. Mr. Chapa maintains a constant state of mental and physical readiness in order to service the city of Mission fleet. We appreciate the dedication and hard work he provides to us on a day-to-day basis. Thank you, Mr. Chapa, and congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Chapa. You and your wife, right? In front of us, your congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you so much. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Congratulations. They'll take your picture right there in the middle.
Right here, so please let's face the camera. I will slide in.
All about balance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two, Ms. Gugia.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. Before you, it's a proclamation that I will be reading. Whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development implemented the Community Development Block Rent City BG Program in 1974 for the purpose of providing local governments with the financial resources to assist low and moderate income persons. And whereas the city of Mission has utilized nonprofit organizations to address neighborhood and human needs. And whereas the CDBG program has made a significant impact on our community through funding of youth, elderly, and disabled, housing assistance, economic development, and for water, sewer, and drainage improvements. And whereas the city of Mission and other local governments have clearly demonstrated the capacity to administer the CDBG program to identify, prioritize, and resolve pressing local problems. And whereas the National Fair Housing Law of 1968 prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not only natural law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans. And whereas the Federal Fair Housing Act recognizes, supports, and encourages the right of every person, regardless of age, regardless of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, disability, and age, to live in the housing of the individual's choice. And whereas the anniversary of the National Fair Housing Law during the month of April provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success in the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of Mission, do hereby designate the month of April as Fair Housing Month, fair housing more than just words. And further, April 5th through the 9th, 2021, as National Community Development Week, proclaimed on this the 22nd day of March, 2021.
Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those approve, same sign. Motion carries 3-0 for the record. And here's the proclamation, Ms. Gugia.
Thank you.
On behalf of the council and myself, I want to say... Item number four, correction, item number three. Mission Historical Museum, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm here on behalf of the Mission Historical Museum Board and staff to present a new initiative by the museum to promote our dynamic local historical sites. Part of this initiative included the development of a brochure that features over 20 historical sites. Our media department was gracious enough to create a promotional video for the project. Wondered about all the historical places within our community? While founded in 1908, the history of the city of Mission begins much earlier with the settlement of the Obley Fathers. Today, the Mission Historical Museum strives to preserve that history and disseminate it to the public. We wanted to share this history with our community by creating an interactive map of places of historical interest in our city. Interested participants can stop at the Mission Historical Museum to pick up a brochure. It's easy. For example, if you want to find La Donita, all you have to do is scan the QR code to bring up the map. Each location is tagged with photos and information pertaining to that site. Make sure to share your adventures with us by using the hashtags #MissionHistory and #DiscoverMission and tag us on social media. To learn more about the museum and experience our virtual exhibits, visit our website at www.missionmuseum.org. And make sure to follow us on Facebook to learn about our upcoming projects. Get ready to explore some remarkable things with the Mission Historical Museum interactive map. Delve into the past and explore your roots. Very nice. Thank you. We're excited to bring this project to our public and to partner with the Greater Chamber of Mission Commerce to kind of bring the project up to a next level. Any questions?
Great job, Cindy.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We're excited about this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four, Ms. Enriquez, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Wonderful items happening and activities here at the chamber these next two weeks. This Wednesday, we will be going Facebook Live on our social media platforms for our Mastermind Series. And this Mastermind Series is going to be, the topic is serving your community while maintaining and running a successful business. So we are featuring Ronnie Ontivettos with Med Care and Home Realty and Sarah Gano with Gano and Sons. So we're excited. So join us this Wednesday. This Thursday, we are also having a joint member mixer with the RGV Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. So if you haven't reserved for the mixer this Thursday, it's going to be from 5:30 to 7:30. Please do so. It's going to be held at the Mission Food Park over at the seat. So we're excited about this joint mixer. Next Tuesday, we have a ribbon cutting. We're excited. It's going to be safe. We're going to, you know, encourage social distancing and face mask coverings. And it's going to be with the Village in the Valley from 5 to 7. The following Thursday, we will have our Winter Text and Appreciation Market Days. It's going to take place here at the Chamber of Commerce Placita, here off the right. And we're also going to have the Mission Museum do an exhibit of the Mission Regional Medical Center. As we've mentioned before, Mission Regional Medical Center is a proud sponsor of the market days happening. So we're having the first one this next Thursday from 11:00 to 3:00 here. So please join us, stop by, swing by. And last week, I'm proud to announce that we secured our title sponsor for our golf tournament. And that is Gano and Sons Trucking. So we thank Gano and Sons for their generosity. And a portion of the proceeds of the golf tournament will benefit Mission CISD Education Foundation. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Ms. Enriquez. Any questions by the council or any concerns or anything?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Ms. Enriquez.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, Ms. Enriquez. And I'm going to call item number five. Item number five is your departmental reports that are, that are on your packet that Mr. Perez is here to answer any questions on any other departmental reports.
Mayor, I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve the departmental reports.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries and I'll call for item number six, citizen participation. Ms. Carrillo, do we have anybody signed up for this?
No, Mayor, I did not have anyone sign up.
Thank you, Ms. Carrillo. Electronically. Charlie, Alex. You don't have anybody? Alex? We have nobody. And then I'm going to call, I'm going to close item number six on citizen participation and open for the public hearings and call for item number nine. And then Ms. Luna, you have the floor. Correction, seven.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number seven is a rezoning of a 1.01-growth acre tract of land, more or less at lot 23-1, west addition to Sherland. It's currently agricultural and they're trying to rezone to R3 multifamily residential. The applicant is Jorge De Leon. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance as needed, the subject site is located approximately a quarter mile north of Barnes Street along the east side of Inspiration Road. Surrounding zones include agricultural to the northwest and south and residential to the east. Existing land uses are to the northeast and west single-family residential, to the south are apartments. The site is currently vacant. The future land use map shows this area as modern density. The proposed zone complies with the future land use map and surrounding land uses. Staff recommended approval. Staff sent notices out to property owners within 200-foot radius. Staff did receive a call against the request and during the public hearing, there was some concerns. The concerns were in regards to having more people, less privacy, increased traffic, safety issues, increased noise levels, and decreased property values. This item is now before you. Planning and zoning still recommending approval.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against the rezoning? Anybody from the audience, please approach the podium at this time? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm going to ask for the individuals that handle the electronic. Do we have anybody electronically that wants to provide information on this public hearing? We have one person?
Rafaela Flores, I know she called and I know she was going to be locked in.
Can you get them?
She is on.
Can you, she is authorized to speak on behalf of the chair?
Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you, ma'am. Go ahead. You have three minutes, ma'am. Please identify yourself and your address for the record, ma'am.
Okay, yes, sir. My name is Rafaela Flores and I live at 1710 North Inspiration Road. I have lived at this residence for over 43 years and I am one of the first homeowners on Inspiration Road. I am opposed to the R3 multi-zoning, rezoning of a neighboring property. A one-acre tract out of lot 23-1, west addition to Sheri subdivision, 1700 North Inspiration Road. Like the lady mentioned before, this type of rezoning would mean more people, less privacy, increased traffic, safety issues, increased noise levels, transients who park along the right-of-way, and a decrease in my property value. Also, how is this going to conserve the value of my property if multifamily developments like these are associated with what I just mentioned? And sir, I have a few questions. Can I ask them now?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Do you know how many apartments are proposed to be built? Is a buffer fence being proposed? And if so, what type of material? Where will the dumpster be placed on the property with a predominant southeast wind? This will cause the odor to carry directly to my property? Can you ensure that stormwater drainage will not be diverted to my property with a reduction to the green area? Thank you for listening to my concerns and I would hope you make a decision and think about this as if this was being rezoned right next to your house. Thank you. That's all I can say. Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against this rezoning? Do we have anybody else electronically? We have one more. That person is authorized. Please connect her. Connect here or she.
Yeah, this is Jorge De Leon. I'm the owner of the property.
Mr. De Leon, please provide your address for the record, sir.
Yeah, the address on the lot is 1700...
Your residential address, sir.
Okay. 2002 Royal Palm Drive, Mission, Texas, 7572.
Go ahead and continue, sir. You have three minutes.
Okay, yes. On the question that my neighbor had, is we're planning to build between eight to 16 units, depends on whatever they allow me to do. But yeah, what I was planning is building them on the south end of the lot. That way, they stay away from them and I can carry on. Since they have a wood fence on their side, on the north side of the lot, I will carry on with a wood fence all the way to the front of the street. That way, they don't have, they keep their privacy. And regarding to the dumpster, since I'm going to build them on the south side, south end of the lot, I can put the dumpster way on the east side, on the end of the lot. And it'll be enclosed with fence, like I have him on my other lot, on 6008 North Inspiration. I own them apartment. So, and I think that's, I'm the only one that have him enclosed, so that won't affect them. And regarded to the traffic, I mean, I don't see what will be the inconvenience about in and out. And, you know, if we're going to have wood fence and, or if she wants to have more privacy, I can build them on the south side and have the traffic on the, on the south side. I mean, and build, put the buildings on the north side. But that shouldn't be an issue, you know, and it'll be built more likely like the next ones out of my lot.
Okay, is that enough? You don't have anything else to add, sir?
No, that should be it.
Okay, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against the rezoning electronically? Is there anybody left? I am, at this time, since there's nobody there, I will close this public hearing and I'm going to ask for guidance from the council. Council, you have the floor.
I have a quick question, Mayor. Will there have to be a plat presented to your department in order to build?
For the side plan, yes.
Yes.
So it will be...
It's a rezoning first and then he needs to submit it.
So it'll be a one-lot subdivision, basically?
And then an internal plat.
And it'll be an internal plat. But at that point, you're going to, you're going to review the concerns that she had about as far as the drainage.
They're still going to require a side plan approval, so he needs to go to P&amp;Z.
Well, I'm just saying that at that time is when those issues get addressed as far as drainage, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Ms. De Luna, apparently there's apartments or townhouses next door, right?
Apartments.
There's like two sets, right?
On the south side, all they have is apartments. And I believe he owns the third set from where he, where he has the proposed site.
Ms. Luna, you also said, I think I heard that the property was vacant?
It's currently vacant.
But there is a home.
He cleaned, no, he cleaned it up.
Oh, it's not there anymore?
It's not there anymore. It's vacant, completely vacant.
Okay. And as far as the buffer, from my understanding is that the neighbor on the north has, has a wall or a cedar fence on the south side of the property?
He offered to, we don't have a specific type. They do require a buffer. It could be masonry block, wood fence. They are required to have a buffer.
Okay. But it is, I guess my question is, is he going to use her fence as the buffer?
He, when I spoke to him in regards to her concerns, he did offer that he could continue or he could put a new one, depending on what she would prefer. He would try to work with her to see what she would like.
I mean, it would be my recommendation to have a new one.
A new one.
A buffer on all three sites.
Yeah, he can have that. Yeah, he can have that.
Yes, at his.
At his expense.
Yes. And like that, it will ensure that the buffers are there, you know, because if people move and, or they decide to.
A buffer is a requirement, either way, whether if he uses her, it is a requirement.
And then, so if something happens to that fence, it's his fence?
His responsibility.
Then he would have to be responsible to maintain it, exactly.
But again, work with the neighbor.
He will, he will be working with. He did try to say that he was gonna get with her to see what would alleviate more of her concerns. But that is something anyway.
Any other questions by the council?
I don't have any other questions, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Ortega, you have any questions?
No, thank you.
I will entertain a motion. Favor or against?
Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and approve what our planning and zoning.
You have motion to approve what the planning and zoning and staff have recommended. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Also, again, with that recommendation of the fence, complete fence.
With what is, we discussed here in.
That is gonna be imposed at the site, at the site plan. Right now, it's just a zoning, whether approved or not, but that is gonna be a requirement during the site plan approval.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, I can record it as 4-0, am I correct? 4-0. Calling for item number eight. Miss, ordinance 4998 was approved and now we're calling for item number eight.
Item number eight is a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window. This is for Little Caesars at 2306 East Expressway D3 Suite 12. This would be lot 1, Cimarron Crossing subdivision, phase one. It's currently zone C3 and the applicant is Jose Arturo Diaz. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of Expressway D3 Furnish Road and Cecilia Lane along the west side of Cecilia Lane. The applicant is proposing a Little Caesars for this location with a drive-through service window. Access to the site is being proposed from a 10-foot driveway from Cecilia Lane. The drive-through service window will allow for five vehicles to be easily stacked. The design will be a mirror of the one along the west side of the building with the exception of the traffic flow. There have been no reported issues with the existing drive-through window in the use by Antojitos Mexicanos in the same plaza. The hours of operation are Monday to Thursday from 10:30 to 11:00, Friday through Sunday from 10:30 to 11:30. He's proposing 35 employees and different shifts. Parking and landscaping are held in common. Staff is recommending approval for one year. In order to assess this new operation, they must comply with building, fire, and health codes and must acquire a business license. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Thank you, Ms. Luna. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against this conditional use permit? Anybody from the audience, please come to the podium at this time? I do not see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm gonna go and move over to electronics. Do we have anybody identified in the electronic to talk in favor against this conditional use permit? No? No? I will close this public hearing and ask for guidance from the council.
Move for approval.
You have motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second and any final discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Ordinance 4998 is approved, 4-0. And calling for item number nine.
Item number nine is a conditional use permit for the sale and outside consumption of alcoholic beverages for the Bus Box. This is at 801 North Bryan Road, A7. This is lot 1, Tamkin subdivision. The applicant is Bus Box. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located on the southwest corner of Bryan Road and Business Highway 83. The applicant has placed a 12-by-20 storage container or pot with an upper deck within the first, within the seed mobile food park and would like to offer and sell alcoholic beverages from it. This would be the first request the city gets for this type of structure and use. He's proposing three employees. Hours of operation is Thursday from 4:00 to 10:00, Friday from 4:00 to 12:00, Saturday from 12:00 to 12:00, and Sunday from 11:00 to 8:00. Parking is held in common. For the sale of alcohol, such uses need to be 300 feet from residential uses. There are no such uses within the radius. He must continue to comply with building, fire, and health codes. In this case, staff is seeking direction. However, P&amp;Z board approved the request. Subject to compliance for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will need to renew their CUP and TABC license, they must continue to comply with building, fire, and health codes, and the acquisition of a business license. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against this conditional use permit? Anybody from the audience, please approach the podium at this time? I don't see anybody from the audience approaching the podium, therefore, I'm gonna move to electronics. Do we have anybody for electronic? We don't have anybody in electronic, therefore, I'm gonna close this public hearing and ask for guidance from the council. Council, any questions?
Ms. Luna, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
In order for them to sell any type of liquor, they have to have that TABC license, so they've already passed all the requirements.
Well, that is, this is one of the requirements. They need to get city's approval first.
Okay.
The property is currently wet zone, but they require the city council's permission to, to be able to sell alcohol.
Okay. And we still have a security guard there at the food truck?
They, they have one.
Okay. I have no more questions, ma'am.
Any questions? Ready to entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve this conditional use permit. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second in this opening for final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0 and ordinance 5000 is approved. Item number 10, Ms. Luna, you have the floor. This is, this is a public hearing?
Yes. Item number 10 is a discussion, yes.
How does the public, how can we get public input if they haven't seen that?
Any, any ordinance that we, that we amend, we publish in the paper. We publish what we're gonna discuss for both meetings. So they're able to log into the, to the planning and zoning and city council.
So, but if they weren't aware of the item, how are they gonna?
It's published.
Provide us feedback?
Usually, any amendment requires publication. So we, the only, the form we have for advertise would be advertising through the newspaper. So that's how we, that's how we notify the public. Anybody that has input or anything would be logging into the meeting.
Okay. I just don't understand how, how we can get public hearings, have a public hearing right now. You know, I mean, we can, you know, we can discuss it to see if the council is ready for any peace changes or whatever, but, but to have a public hearing for approval of the ordinance, it's, in my opinion, is premature.
We can certainly table it if you want to or discuss it and take no action.
I'll let the, I'll let the council, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing to see if there's anybody that has read the article or the ordinance on the paper. And, and so we'll open it up. Go ahead and open it up.
Okay, so discussion and action to amend inspection and planning fees. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption would be needed. Staff has compared inspections and planning fees with other municipalities and have determined the need to adjust and approve new fees for some services provided to our citizens. In this case, we're only be amending per inspections if the council is inclined to. For the plumbing permit fee, currently, the plumbing is calculated based on the total square footage of a home, but we understand that not all the home has plumbing. So we, what we are suggesting is to charge only by fixtures, like it was done previously. For the gas permit, we just wanna increase to be compatible with the other cities, such as McAllen. Swimming pool, for the swimming pool, we currently charge, the value is calculated, the fee is calculated by the value, but we've noticed that some of the inspectors or the contractors are, put a lesser amount to pay a lesser fee. So what we're trying to do is just a set fee of $300 for, for any type of swimming pool. The other, the other amendment would be the solar panel permit fees. This is currently calculated by cost and we would also like to set up a set fee of $300. If the council is inclined, now for commercial and remodeling permits, we wanna be able to have the flexibility to charge either by square footage or by cost of construction, depending on what's being remodeled. There's a table with some examples. For example, commercial remodeling is 15 feet, a square foot, depending on the renovation, but sometimes they're only gonna remove windows, so it would be unfair to charge them by the square footage if it's only very minimal what they're charging. So we wanna be able, depending on the construction, be able by the value or by the square footage. And for planning and zoning, it's just to amend if they want to. We currently don't have a fee for voluntary annexation, so what we wanna do is be able to recover the cost for public, any publications that we do and any notices that we mail out.
So, thank you for taking the initiative of coming up with all this, 'cause I know that it takes a lot of work to let us know. And it's good work. Can we maybe table it and have a couple?
Well, we're in a public hearing right now. I need to hear the public to see, you know, I need to open it. You, are we ready to open it up?
Yes, this item's on.
This is a public hearing for discussion and action to amend inspections and planning fees. Anybody from the audience would like to approach the podium? I don't see anybody approaching the podium. Anybody that electronically has, has indicated that they wanna provide feedback on the discussion and action to amend the inspections and planning fees? Do we have? No? No? I will close the public hearing and ask for guidance from the council and I'll give the floor to Ms. Garcia. Ms. Garcia, you have the floor.
Well, I would, I mean, we can discuss it, but I would like to table it to, to have a little more time to kind of.
The chair recognizes your motion, ma'am, to table. Go ahead, hear a second. We have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, both same sign. A motion carries. Item, I will not assign it an ordinance number. We don't assign it an ordinance number, right?
That is correct.
Because it's tabled, okay. And I'll call for item number 11.
Item number, yes, it's another public hearing and this one is discussion and action to implement a no parking on grass ordinance for residential properties. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance would be needed. A direction was given to my department to work on an ordinance that would help beautify our city and promote green landscaping. Our code enforcement officers were enforcing this based on an off-street parking definition, but after further review and after confirming with our city attorney and judge, it was determined that in order to enforce this, we would need to create an ordinance to be able to enforce it properly. In the screen, you're gonna see some examples of the concerns that we've been having and ultimately what we are trying to amend with this.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
In reference to the picture on the upper left-hand corner, the red car?
Hmm?
Is, is that considered a junk car? And if it is, we already have an ordinance to cover junk cars.
It would be considered, well, we would need to check on the license plate, but based on the condition, yes, it would be considered a junk vehicle.
But the other one doesn't show.
But the other two aren't.
The one to the left, to further left, in the case that they drive up and down.
So, so our goal is for them to have them parked in the driveway and not in their lawn?
I guess the question that I would, the question that's been asked of me, where do you want us to park?
I know a lot of people have small lots, but.
And small streets.
And small streets, but ultimately, the driveway is their, they can add to their parking, to their driveway, to, to be able to park in a, but in the lawn, it, it wouldn't be feasible. We've been getting a lot of complaints, honestly, and based on the last year from September to December, there were about 42 complaints that we had filed, but we cannot enforce because we don't have an ordinance that.
You don't have an ordinance.
I mean, we've been getting complaints, that's why we're here with this ordinance to try and see if the council is willing to adopt it or discuss and wanna make other changes to it.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Let's finish the public hearing and then I'll open it for your question, if you don't mind. Go ahead and continue.
This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Thank you, Ms. Luna. Anybody in favor against this discussion and action to implement a no parking on the grass ordinance for residential properties? Anybody from the audience, please approach the podium at this time? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'll go to electronics. Charlie, do we have anybody identified? Anybody? I do wanna register that I did have an email complaint by, by an individual in reference to opposing the, the city ordinance.
Okay.
Just a question. Ms. Garcia, I've closed the public hearing at this time and, and Ms. Ortega, you have the floor, ma'am.
So, two questions. One's for legal. I wanted to know if, is it legal to, to have an ordinance telling a person what they can do in their own property as far as parking cars of work? Because even just a couple of nights ago, I was driving somewhere around town and there was a DPS trooper that was parked just like this at his property. I understand the junk cars, but that is another depart, or your department, to make sure that those get removed and get sited. So can we?
You can, under the beautification clauses of the ordinance, you can. I mean, it's not completely, well, it's unusual, but I guess to the extent that Susie's talking about, it's, it's, it's coupled with junk vehicles and stuff like that. You have, you can require a driveway, the same way if you wanna park your motorhome, you, you can't just park it in the yard. You gotta park it on concrete, asphalt. So it's kind of the same vein. You can, it's not, it's a little unusual, but you can, under the beautification clauses.
And what does this ordinance say? What does this ordinance say?
It's, it's for, it's for permanent vehicles in the sense that there is an exception in case you have a party or Thanksgiving or whatever, but it's, it's essentially, you're unable to use your lawn like a driveway. You should have a driveway.
That's what the ordinance says?
That's what, that's the spirit of the ordinance, yes.
And my second question, Ms. Luna, is, thank you, guys. Have you looked in what other municipalities or surrounding municipalities have as far as this type of ordinance in their town? Who else has one like this?
We have, we did check with some of them. Some of them don't have an ordinance in place yet. They, they are not enforcing. It would be part of a junk vehicle.
You see a lot of HOAs, Mayor, and Madam Mayor Pro, HOAs requiring you to do this. This would be on a citywide basis, but you do see it a lot of HOAs.
And do we have the staff to enforce it?
Well, that's another thing. That will be up to Ms. Luna to, to speak for.
Any other question by any of the council?
Yes, I, um.
Go ahead, Ms. Garcia.
Whenever we get an permit to build a home, don't we require for them to have a tree and some landscaping?
Yes, it's a requirement that they need to have one, at least one tree that they have parking for two, up to two vehicles.
So that's part of our beautification, part of our requirement. By us not having something in place, it's like we are contradicting ourselves. I mean, we ask you to put, so, certain percentage of landscaping needs to go into a particular lot, according to the size of the lot. So, to me, it's part of the beautification I, that we need to enforce. We require a tree, I mean, I'm smart, but I mean, a lot of times, we even in the commercial properties, we require for them to have landscaping, but nothing to water it or something. So all of those grass dies and just so people start using it as a driveway. So I think if we don't have something in place, we pretty much contradicting ourselves of what we're requiring at the beginning.
We require, we require in a, in every time they get a building permit and before a final inspection, a final is done, they require to have driveway and at least a tree, open space.
Yes. And obviously, the open space also allows for absorption during the rain and it helps in the drainage, the drainage of, of the water also, you know?
So, Mayor, I would like to make a motion for us if it's necessary to, to enforce on top of what we don't allow for people to use their lawns as a parking space.
Mr. Plata, the chair will wait on recognizing your motion because we still have two other council members that need to express their, their opinion and concern and then I'll, I'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay, thank you, mayor.
Um, yes, I just have a question on the fine. Um, it, it just says that the evaluation of this ordinance may result, may result in a fine not to exceed $500. So how are you?
That's just the minimum, but it would be depending on the judge. The judge will set the fee, but it cannot be more than 500.
So the judge will decide on the fee?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's the maximum.
Minimum.
That's the maximum amount.
Okay.
So the judge can either no fine or $20 or whatever the judge feels.
Okay.
And there may be some verbal warnings also.
Of course, of course, ma'am, yeah.
Before, before enforcing that. So see if they can comply and we don't have to go to court. Mr. Eta?
As long as we get the verbal warnings and, and the fees are, you know.
Excessive.
I'm okay.
Ms. Garza, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you if you can finish.
No, no. I was good, yes.
Now I'll go back to Mr. Plata. Mr. Plata, the chair will entertain your motion, sir.
Yes, ma'am, I would like to approve that we are, uh, uh, implement a no parking on grass ordinance for residential properties.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries and I'm gonna log it in at 5:01 unless I get an objection from any of the council members for ordinance 5001. Ordinance 5001 is approved 5-0. And I will, uh, thank you, Ms. Deluna.
Thank you.
I will call for consent agenda item. All consent agenda items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item to be removed and considered separately. The city council may take various actions, including but not limited to rescheduling an item in its entirety for a future date or time. The city council may elect to go into executive session on any item, whether or not such item is posted as an executive session item at any time during the meeting when authorized by the provision of the Open Meeting Act. I will, I will, we have consent item, agenda item number 12, number 13, 14, approval of ordinance 5002.
15.
And for item number 15, approval of resolution 1723 for item number 16, item number 17, item number 18, item number 19. At this time, I'm gonna ask the direction from the council.
I'm going to approve that consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda item. Any last minute by any of the council members to pull any of the items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries consent agenda item number 12, 13, 14, ordinance 5002, item number 16, resolution 1723, number seven, correction, 16, resolution number 1723, item number 17, 18, and 19 are approved 5-0 and calling for approvals and authorizations, item number 20. And Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Mayor and council, item number 20, it's a homestead exemption variance. This is for the property locate, um, for the east 100 feet of the west 300 of the south, 104 feet of Lot 30-4 West addition to Sharonan. It's currently zone agricultural and the applicant is Julio Cesar Garibay. The tract is located 300 feet east of Stool Road along the north side of Blue Rock. The lot exceeds the square footage requirements for an R1 lot. The applicant desires to construct his single-family residence. On November 10, 2014, the city council passed a homestead exemption ordinance which allows the homesteads to be granted various waivers to the city subdivision requirements if and only if the lot is being proposed for the applicant's personal, single-family home. The applicant is proposing to connect to an existing six-inch water line along, located along Blue Rock, service water for the lot. For sewer, the applicant is proposing to connect to an existing six-inch sanitary sewer line along the Blue Rock to provide sewer for service. Staff recommends approval subject to compliance with all homestead exemption variance requirements. This item is now before you. This is not a public hearing.
What is the council's?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second in this opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, item number 20 is approved 5-0 and calling for item number 21. And Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item 21 is a preliminary and final plat approval for Trosper Fair Heights subdivision. This is a five-acre gross tract of land, more or less, out of Lot 29-4 West addition to Sharonan. It's currently zone R1, single-family residential. The developer is Heidi Sanchez and Ephraillan Marine. The engineer is Salinas Engineering and Associates. The property is located approximately 355 north of Mount Two North Road along the west side of Trosper Road. The developer is proposing 22 lots. 21 lots will be for single-family residential lot and one will be for, used for drainage detention pond. Water and services will be complying with city requirements. Staff is recommending approval, subject to payment of capital sewer recovery fees, provide water district exclusion, and comply with all other format findings. This item is now before you.
What is the request of the council?
I'm going to approve based on the recommendation.
We have a motion to approve, item number 21. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second in this opening for discussion.
Are they gonna transfer the ownership of Lot 22 to the city?
I'm sorry?
The ownership of Lot 22 or the detention pond?
Are they gonna transfer it?
No. No?
They're gonna maintain it.
They're gonna maintain it?
Is that normal?
And if, they're gonna have an HOA? Okay. So if it doesn't get maintained?
If it doesn't get maintained, we'll be addressing the HOA. They're gonna have an HOA which they're gonna be responsible.
And do we have an ordinance to address that?
An ordinance to address?
With the HOA? Mr. Martínez, do we have an ordinance to address it with the HOA?
Not with the HOA.
We can have the authority and the jurisdiction to.
It would be treated like, it would be treated like a weedy lot, mayor. We would go in there and, and clean it and build the HOA in fact, if they don't maintain it. Yeah.
I'm just asking.
Yeah. Is, I mean, uh, is that by their choice or is that our choice to do that?
To, to dedicate, to remember, it's their choice.
It's their choice, okay.
Since they're gonna have an HOA, they're, they wanna maintain, they wanna maintain it. Now, if we could maybe put a plat note, that way it'll be on the plat.
And what would that say?
The HOA is responsible for maintaining detention pond.
And, and if not, then it would be transferred to the city of Mission or something to that effect? I don't know very.
Uh, I guess some kind of action, you can import their, uh, some kind of action will be taken care of. The city will take necessary action to.
Right. We can approach the HOA, see if they want to transfer it, but if the HOA dissolves and they'll stop paying taxes on that lot and it'll eventually come up for delinquent tax sale and the city will then get it, I guess, but we can, we can approach them and see if they, if they would rather give it to the city.
I think that would be a good idea to, for the city to ask them if, if, uh, you know, if, we might as well just get it.
Yes, because eventually I think it'll come to our possession anyway.
We, we have other subdivisions that we have a lot of problems with, you know, with that. The fact that we have, they, they decide that time has, uh, has been on their side, you know, and they, they take there and now they want for us to, to maintain it and we can't go in there because it doesn't belong to the city.
Yes.
Right.
You know, and I have to wait till a disaster, you know, to be able to go in. And, and I know JP is over there, uh, thinking we're gonna have more work for JP, but that's okay. We'll take care of you.
We can ask them to, to, to.
Can we just say that's what we want instead of giving them an option?
So if they have an HOA, we, we don't really have much authority over them, so we kind of stay out of their way. But we can definitely say that it is, it is recommended by the city council that this be transferred to us to properly, for it to be properly maintained.
But the HOA hasn't been, hasn't been, no, I mean, it's not a, it's not a.
No, it hasn't been formed yet, but.
It's in the preliminary state.
Yes, it's very preliminary, so they, they're, they haven't even sold the lots yet.
Yes.
No, not yet. So that would.
We'll reach out to them, tell them that it's, it's a better idea for them to give it to us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item 21, preliminary and final plat approval has been approved.
Is it just preliminary?
Yes, it's just preliminary. It's preliminary.
I, I heard you say, uh, and final.
Well, sorry, it is, no, it is just preliminary.
It's just, so we'll see it again.
I stand corrected then.
Yes, you stand correctly. The problem is for planning and zoning, it only goes one time, but yes, it is preliminary.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
I stand corrected.
No, it's good, we're gonna see it again.
Item number 22, Ms. Rocha, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Uh, the next item, we're requesting authorization to purchase electronic library material, ebooks and audiobooks from Biblioteca to use on the Cloud Library Platform. We're gonna be making this available to checkout for patrons uh, from a computer or electronic device as long as they have a library card from one of the public libraries in Hidalgo County. Biblioteca provides certain products that can only be acquired through them, mainly the Cloud Library Platform and Cloud Link Subscription. It's designed and manufactured exclusively by Biblioteca. Uh, the funds for this are from the county of Hidalgo, who's, who funds our county e-library project. We have an interlocal in place between the county and the city of Mission and it was approved on March 8, 2021. This agreement allows the county to continue to pay funds on behalf of and disburse funds to Superior Library for contractual services and library materials.
May I move to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second and opening for any other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item 22 is approved 5-0, ma'am. And I'm calling for item number 23. Isabella, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. Item number 23 is the acceptance of our quarterly report of investments for the quarter ending December 31st. We had increases of $1,526.34 and decreases of $250,000, leaving an outstanding investment balance of $10,436,624.59. Interest earned year-to-date is $9,167.73. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0, item number 23, and I'm calling for item number 24. Isabella, you have the floor.
Item number 24 is the approval of our January 2021 financial statements. We had total revenues of $14,102,955 and total expenditures of $5,460,434, leaving an N B unadjusted fund balance of $23,439,767. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I, opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item number 25.
Item number 25 is the approval of the attached budget amendments in the general fund and designated purpose fund. We have two budget amendments in the prior year for fiscal year 2019, 2020. In the general fund, a reclassification of $1,554,691 and in the designated purpose fund, a reclassification of $3,003,18, which is in expenditures to cover the adjustment to the County Care Act funding revisions as, as given by the county. Um, I just want to add that as of now, out of the 11.1 million, we've received 9.4 million, which is 85%. So these revisions were from our end-of-year audit and we just need to make them done in prior fiscal year. In the current fiscal year, we have a general fund amendment for $30,752 in revenues and expenditures for the County of Hidalgo Library Project as for interlocal for contractual services and library materials. And in the designated purpose fund, we have an amendment of $255,349 in revenues and expenditures for the Texas Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which will be administered by CDBG. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second in this opening for any discussion.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, Ms. Bella. So you were mentioning of the 11.9, we have eight, right? That we have been reimbursed?
Not, out of the 11.1, yeah, we've been reimbursed 9.4, which is 85%.
Do you have a response or something from?
We're still working on the final reimbursement submission, so that should take care of the rest and we hope to get that done, you know, within the next month.
But we have flexibility.
Yes.
And time, right?
Yes, the county is working with us to get that.
So, ma'am, and just to, to clarify, so that's the amount that we're having to reclassify because of the economic support? And so we're working to, uh, to be able to submit them under salaries so that we can get reimbursed the additional difference.
And how are we with the, with the, uh, the loan?
Oh, we paid it off.
As of, at the end of February, so it was paid off.
Okay, thank you, that's.
The line of credit.
It was a line of credit of 5 million, um, and we paid it off completely, so.
And Ms. Bella, what is the, the deadline for you to turn in the rest of the items to the county?
Um, they have until 2021, the end of this year, but we definitely, you know, we want to do it as soon as possible, so.
Oh, they give it until the end of the year?
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, we're turning it in as soon as possible.
Yes, that's what we were, the staff is working on too.
Okay, good, thank you.
And of course, if the county has any more money and they want, they need more projects to be submitted, Mr. Pettis, uh, you know, we can submit more projects.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
If they have funding, supplemental funding.
Yes, we're always ready to accept additional funds.
Yes, thank you.
You want that in form of a motion, mayor? You want that in form of a motion?
Yes, I was wanting to just.
I second that.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? And we had enough discussion already. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item number 25 is approved, Isabella. Thank you very much. Item number 26, Mr., Ms. Lerma, either.
Yes, good afternoon, mayor and council. Item number 26 is authorization to proceed with plans Item number twenty-six is authorization to proceed with plans for the Texas Citrus Fiesta Parade, the Fun Fair and the Cook-Off, which is scheduled for May fifteenth of twenty-twenty-one. Um, Lisa Rivera is on, uh, the Zoom meeting, in case you all have any particular questions, but at this time, we are seeking council direction.
Council, uh, what is the direction?
And, uh, what about the, the carnival?
May fifteen is a Saturday.
Uh, I guess, uh, uh, the person representing the Texas, uh, Citrus Fiesta, how about the carnival? Is the carnival coming or, or is the carnival not available? Please identify yourself and, uh, your address.
You asking me, Mayor? An apology.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President. Go ahead.
This is a house company business person, the citrus. And I would just put on record that, that we do have here, uh, at the office, we have Ms. Norma Liganza, we have, uh, Mr. Calacchia, and of course, Ms. Lisa Rivera, Director. Uh, we also have Ms. Amanda Ocaña, Ms. Christina Silva, Ms. Joanne Olvera, and Mr. Robert Somar on Zoom. I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record as well. As, as far as the carnival, we do not have a, a date for the carnivals. So this would, uh, carnival will not be in place for this May fifteenth eleven.
So for the record, your request is, uh, the Texas Citrus Fiesta Parade, the Texas Citrus Fiesta Fun Fair, and the Texas Citrus Fiesta Cook-Off on May fifteenth twenty-one. Am I correct, Mr. President?
I think they lost their video, Mayor.
We lost the connection there.
Really? Can we, can we add?
That is.
In case they do.
That is correct, Mayor, and, and City Council. We are requesting for a full-blown parade, and not a drive-through, a, a full drive-by, I mean, a full parade.
Sir, if, uh, if you and your board do not object, we would like to add the, the carnival there, just in case you do get one, so you don't have to come back to the council, and you can go directly to your, uh, to, to, to permits, uh, if, if you choose the carnival. Or, or your official request is the Texas Citrus Fiesta Parade, Fun Fair and Cook-Off on May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. It's up to you, sir.
Perfectly fine, Mayor. Just let you know that you, you all cut off quite a bit for the last.
No, I'm sending you messages.
It's their connection, Mayor.
Yeah. I mean, we can add it, and if they don't need it, well.
That's fine, Mayor. And like I said, right now, the carnival is not in place, so, uh, we, we don't have to worry about that right now.
Okay, sure.
So they don't want the carnival?
We, we can go ahead and do it.
They just said no.
They, they just said no, they don't want it, because I, I, remember what they discussed before, that there's a season for the carnivals, and then this season may be that they're traveling to up, upstate, up, up country. So the, the carnivals are not accessible during that time. But, uh, is the wishes of the council?
I still think we should just add it, just in case.
Well, entertain your motion.
I'm, uh, so moved to add the carnival, in case they, uh, you know, in case they can have it.
Yep, for May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
For May fifteenth, yes.
Second.
We have a motion and, and a second to approve the parade, Fun Fair, Cook-Off, and, and at the request of the council, add the carnival for May fifteenth, if you all get a flyer one, and if not, we'll just ignore it, you know, as far as that is concerned. Any questions by the city council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Uh, motion carries, the item number twenty-six, it's approved, five-zero. Mr. President, advise your board and that, uh, that you have, if you'd like, and go forth with the parade, the Fun Fair and the Cook-Off on May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Provided that we follow the CDC guidelines that are at, at the time on May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
And you get a permit.
Okay, I'm calling for item number twenty-seven. Uh, Mr. Pettis, you gonna, you gonna address it, Mr. Pettis, an item? For the record, if the ordinance is approved, it'll be ordinance five thousand, zero, three, five thousand, three, if the ordinance is approved, for item number twenty-seven, for the record.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Pettis, you have the floor.
Uh, item twenty-seven, we, we do have, uh, our financial advisors and our senior, uh, managers for underwriters, uh, for the, this, uh, particular transaction. This is approval of the ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Mission Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Cert- uh, Certificates of Obligation Series twenty-twenty-one, awarding the sale thereof and containing matters, uh, incident thereto. Uh, the action required in this item is the approval of an ordinance to complete the process of the tax note financing in the principal amount of twenty-two million, uh, for the streets and drainage improvements, utility system improvements, park improvements, facility improvements, and land acquisition, and the payment of professional services in connection thereto, uh, payment of cost of issuance of the certificate obligations. Um, in, in your, uh, what was passed, uh, as a packet, uh, we do have our financial advisors that would, um, Dusty Trailer, that, uh, will go through the, uh, specific, uh, data on this, uh, transaction. Uh, go ahead, Dusty.
Thank you, thank you, Randy. Good afternoon, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you, uh, and, and to be able to report, uh, the very favorable results that we had today for the city's sale of the certificates of obligation. Um, as I know you guys have been working towards, uh, this issue for many months now, and it's great to be able to deliver, uh, nice results. So before you, uh, on page number three is a, a quick summary of the transaction. Um, we, we were in the market today to sell the certificates of obligation. The actual principal amount of those certificates of obligation that will be issued is actually eighteen million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. However, the investors in the certificates are paying a premium for those, totaling of about three point three-three million. So therefore, under uses, we are going to be able to deliver to the city the full twenty-two million dollars into your project account. A couple of items I wanna make sure that we point out here related to the transaction is, um, the all-in interest rate on these certificates of obligation, this is a fixed rate over the twenty-year life, is a two point two-eight percent. Again, that's fixed over the life of the transaction. Uh, the bonds were sold in the market today, um, utilizing the city's underlying bond rating of A by S and P, and I wanna discuss that real quickly with you. Your team, uh, there at the city did a great job of preparing the city's creditworthiness in conference calls with standard emporers as we were leading up to this transaction. Uh, city manager, deputy city manager, CFO, EDC director, um, all participated and did a great job of communicating to S and P, um, the positive financial results, uh, that this team at the City of Mission has been delivering, and that helped to translate into the positive results today. So S and P affirmed your A underlying rating, but I think there were a lot of positives that came out of that. Hopefully, if we continue trending the way we're trending financially in the next year or handful of years, we could see our bond rating increase by S and P. That being said, the bonds were also priced actually as though they were double-A, uh, rated, and that is because of an insurance policy purchased from Build America Mutual. Uh, we competed, had the two insurance companies compete for, uh, the, the insurance to provide the, their insurance on these bonds to get a lower rate. The Build America Mutual was the lower bid, and that helped, again, to provide low interest rates as you go out there into the market. So the, uh, the certificates of obligation received a very favorable rate. Uh, in fact, as we were looking at the debt service today versus the debt service when we were looking at this project a cup, you know, two, three months ago, uh, the total debt service on this twenty-two million dollars that will be delivered to the city is approximately two million dollars less over the life of the obligations that had originally been, uh, expected, so that's a great positive benefit.
So at this time, sir, we're, uh, staff is recommending approval. Uh, one of the things that, um, Dusty, just correct me on the dates, but the available funding would be, uh, around the second week of April, uh, so the funds would be available at that, uh, at that time.
That's correct, Randy. April twentieth is when we expect the funds to be delivered to the city.
A move for approval is presented?
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and also open it for discussion, any discussion of the... All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Uh, motion carries, item ordinance five thousand, zero, five thousand, three, is approved, five-zero, and calling for item number twenty-eight, uh, Mr. Pettis, you have the floor.
I guess so.
For the record, it'll be five thousand, four.
Yes, sir, thank you.
The ordinance number.
And, and I'll, um, I'll present the item and I'll, uh, have Dusty go through the, the statistical information as well, uh, for this, uh, approval of the ordinance of, uh, five thousand, four, authorizing the issuance of City of Mission General Obligation Refunding Bond Series twenty-twenty-one, authorizing the amount and interest, price, redemption provisions and terms thereof, and certain other procedures and provisions related thereto, containing other matters related to. The action required in this item is the approval of mention above, captioned order, to authorize the refunding of outstanding certificate obligation Series two thousand nine, uh, general obligation refunding bond Series two thousand nine, uh, certificate obligation Series twenty-ten, certificate obligation Series twenty-twenty, I mean, twenty-twelve, and general obligation refunding, uh, Series twenty-twelve, and, and the complete, the formal process for this bond, uh, financing. Uh, this, uh, this is a refunding of these, uh, of outstanding debt. Uh, the approximate savings, uh, for this, for refunding is five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, uh, over the life of the, of the refunding, and, uh, Dusty, go ahead, if you wanna, uh, interject on the interest rate and so forth.
Thank, thank you, Randy. Um, and, and again, on this one, again, I think we had a very favorable result today. As Randy said, uh, the overall savings on this is, uh, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. Uh, the interest rate on this one is a one point seven-one percent. The reason for the differential between the interest rate on this versus the, the certificate of obligation is this just has a shorter life. Uh, the final maturity, uh, of these particular bonds is in twenty-thirty-two, uh, so it doesn't go out quite as far, and so that's the reason for the lower rate. Uh, the savings pattern on this will save about thir- just under thirty-one thousand dollars, uh, in the remainder of this current fiscal year, and then from years twenty-two through thirty-two, the savings will equal to approximately forty-five thousand dollars per year in each of those years. So, uh, again, favorable result, and again, I think it's always worth pointing out on a refinancing two things. This is just again, just like if you or I were to refinance our home mortgage, have a little bit higher, uh, interest rate on an older loan, and we're just seeking to, uh, get a lower interest rate to help reduce our annual payments, but we're not extending, uh, the term, uh, the, the term of the bond, uh, associated with it.
I move to approve.
We have a motion on the floor to approve ordinance, uh, five thousand, four.
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for discussion or any questions by the council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, uh, ordinance five thousand, four, is approved, five-o, and I'm calling for item number twenty-nine, and Mr. Pettis, you have the floor. Thank you, uh, financial advisors, uh, and thank you, staff, for all the hard work, uh, that you've done also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, item twenty-nine is a discussion of possible action on modifying COVID-nineteen City of Mission Guidelines. Uh, this is the opportunity for the city council to make any modifications on the city's existing guidelines. Excuse me. Currently, uh, a couple of things that we wanna propose on opening up the, so we're, we're proposing to open up, uh, the library and the museum, um, and, of course, with modified, um, hours, uh, the, the, the library, for the most part, would be, uh, open for the area that's available. Um, the area that's not available is under construction, so that will be closed, remain closed. We will be closing from twelve to one daily, uh, for sanitizing purposes, and then also limiting, uh, the use of, uh, two hours, uh, per day per patron for the computers, so that way we can disinfect and, and, uh, clean the, the keyboards and so forth. Um, the museum, uh, we're looking at also a modified, uh, opening, uh, fifty percent occupancy, uh, for this particular, uh, with some modified times as well. Uh, we will be, uh, looking at, at the, um, at the demand, uh, for these facilities, uh, and adjust them accordingly as necessary. Uh, we will be doing that. Also, uh, in our parks and recreation, uh, we are currently, um, using the fields for rental and practice purposes. However, we will like, uh, to start, uh, city, city-sponsored league play, uh, to be able to start the registration for the adult leagues, and then also, uh, we will be, um, uh, restricting the dugout use and the bleachers and so forth, so it'll be limited use, uh, for, uh, those fields. Uh, also, we are looking at, uh, opening the additional restrooms in the remaining parks. Um, we, we do have a sanitation plan for the restrooms as necessary. Uh, we, we do have other parks that are used, um, uh, more than others, and so we will be looking at, at, at those particular restrooms now. Um, one of the, one of the, the, the calls that we're receiving is on the runs, uh, five Ks, ten Ks, uh, those we wanna look at, uh, you know, they, they've submitted safety plans on registration and also on, on, uh, the, the social distancing on those, on those particular, uh, runs.
I would think that they would be okay as long as they're done outside.
Yes, sir.
You know.
And, and normally, they're done at the hike and bike trail, uh, and those are, those are the requests that are being, um, requested at this time.
Would they need to wear their mask?
Yes.
Yes, while they're running or walking or whatever?
Yes, they're, um, so they're, um, the permission would be, you know, running per groups for fifteen per start time, and they would space them out, um, and then also the registrations would be handled separately to not have a, any groups of individuals gather at one time, and then, of course, no, um, no medals or anything afterwards, you know, like a ceremonial type of, of, uh, of a function afterwards. So that's, uh, they, they do, we will be reviewing their safety plan as these, they, they have, uh, been submitted. Other, other cities have, uh, implemented already the runs as well, um, and so those are the requests at the ti- at, at this time that we would, uh, like to, um, amend.
I wanna go, is that, uh, is that all your requests?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I would like to add also for us to open the, uh, the lobby for the utility and allow restrictive, uh, insight, like, uh, new applications, uh, you know, uh, a citizen that wants to dispute their water bill, reconnections, you know, things of that nature, that we, we go ahead and allow those, and not, not, not fully open to the public, so we can begin to, to work those, uh, those glitches and, and ensure that, I don't interrupt you, I will ensure that, uh, the citizens won't come down the hallway to this site without, uh, without proper, uh, you know, protocol.
Yes, we'll, we'll put, uh, measures in place to make sure that, that we have limited amount of individuals in the lobby and then also in line as well, so, so the spacing.
Maybe that'll help the, the line outside, you know, a little bit, you know?
Yes, we, we can definitely, uh, adjust to that.
Randy?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Pettis, I, to, picking bank on what the mayor was saying, I think there's a way with how residents come to the window over here, they can maybe pay and have somebody, staff from the water department come over here to this window and make a payment instead of being in the long line, to see how that starts, 'cause I'm kinda leery about how, I don't know, I, maybe it's a little too soon about how gradual process.
Let's work on this, on this ones first, and then see how that impact.
Yeah, and, and currently, what, what we can, we can start with, uh, currently, what takes longer is the new accounts. Um, and we did designate a lane, uh, for new accounts only, however, um, sometimes it takes longer for that process, and it creates a line, uh, going back into the, excuse me, into the, into the Street of Highland, and so, um, we can start with new accounts and see how that works. Uh, we definitely wanna, uh, limit the amount of, of individuals coming into, uh, the lobby area and so forth, so we will work with staff to how we can modify that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And, and maybe, maybe later on, we can add that those that are vaccinated can come and pay their water bill over here in the lobby as, as, as we open slowly.
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll monitor it as, as we, as we.
And your suggestion is, uh, like, today I observed, there were about eight people outside at one time. You know, they, they self, uh, they'll self-face themselves out, but they're, I mean, but we do have traffic already, already in that, in that window.
Those are all for birth certificates or cemetery, um, arrangements?
They don't come at the same time.
Yeah.
I, I take that back. A lot of them come at the same time, but if you were to spread them, it would be, you know, an hour or maybe ninety minutes, uh, of line, you know, but, but, uh, they do have activity at, at the window, uh, as, as far as that is concerned, so, uh, for the sake of the, at least it's not to the next city council meeting, and then, uh, we can, we can work, look at, look at your, your recommendation.
No, we, uh, we, we can, we can start with that and see how, uh, the, the, uh, the individuals that do come in, uh, for that and monitor that.
The other one is, how is the boys' club, uh, uh, boys and girls' club, uh, doing with, because now, I think Mission School District opens tomorrow for in-person?
Yeah, so we, we have had, um.
So the tutoring and the homework?
Yes, sir, we, we are, we are available to, for the after-school program. Uh, as of, uh, last week, a week and a half ago, we had about thirty individuals that, uh, had, um, claim interest to bring their children for the after-school program. We are set up and ready, uh, at a limited capacity at both sites, um, and we are taking also registrations for the baseball league as well.
Also, uh, if, Kate, if you don't have the figure, uh, we can do it for the next city council meeting, but, uh, vaccinations, how many vaccinations total have been done since, since we opened up the Mission Event Center for vaccination?
Uh, total, you have, how many?
If you don't have it, that's fine, you, you can get it for the next city council.
David, how many, uh, have we had, um, vac- vaccination sites?
Yes, uh, Mayor and Council, we, we've held, uh, five, uh, first round and three second rounds, so we are, we've, we've done a little over three thousand complete, first and second round, and then add another two thousand first round, is what we've done so far.
That's, that's, yes, sir. Uh, one, one last thing also, sir, is, uh, we've, we have received, um, you know, calls and, and requests for the, you know, Easter, upcoming Easter holiday for city parks. Um, that's, that's something that the staff is, is prepared to, to, um, to manage as far as, uh, you know, them using the, the facility, facilities as far as Easter celebration.
Because it's, because it's a religious, uh, the religious activities involved, you know, I would say that, you know, just open it up.
You know, our, our, we, the intent is to have the parks available.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to mention that.
Randy, so, um, the, the younger leagues are also gonna...
Randy, so, um, the, the younger leagues are also going to open up?
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned developed, but the younger ones are also going to...
Yes, we have, uh, we're currently doing registrations for the Boys and Girls Club, uh, baseball leagues. Um, we, we will start, uh, the softball leagues for the adult league, uh, at the Parks and Rec. But, uh, we, we have been taking, uh, registrations for teams. We have, um, at least twenty to thirty teams already registered, uh, for the Boys and Girls Club. Um, so they're excited to, to play. Obviously, it's going to be a modified, uh, season because we are starting later on, but, uh, we will have the availability.
Okay.
Any other, Mr. Perez?
No, sir.
Any other from the council? I would entertain a motion to approve all of his recommendations and the recommendations made.
So, move, mayor.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item number twenty-nine is approved.
Thank you.
According to Mr. Perez's presentation. We have no unfinished business, so I'm going to go to routine matters. Mr. Uh, city manager, you have the floor.
Um, just, uh, we'll, we'll continue with, uh, advising, uh, the public and, and council regarding any future, uh, vaccination sites, uh, coming. Uh, we're still partnering up with, uh, the, the Idaho County, so we'll, we'll make, make that, uh, information available as soon as we have that availability. And that's all I have, sir.
Okay. Uh, as far as, uh, the next item is, is the mayor's comment. Uh, I would like to call the, the council, uh, for a possible workshop, uh, for next week, uh, so we can begin to review, uh, by that time, the treasury would have already released the information on, on our, on our, uh, grant that was provided directly by the legislators.
So, so we have, uh, preliminary information. Um, their, their, um, indication is that funding would probably be available sometime in October of this year. Yes, um, so final, final guidelines aren't, uh, available. They have not, uh, re- released any. Uh, we do have preliminary information regarding it, so, uh, we do, we can, uh, if that's the, um...
Maybe we should wait, mayor.
It's, I was going to say, yes, uh, it's up to the, the council. I just, well, for the, for the food for thought, start now noting down the, there are five categories, the five categories, the general categories that, uh, that, uh, law has allowed us to be able to, to use the funding for. You know, it's, if you could email that, those categories to, to the...
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Perez, uh, so you can start jotting down ideas.
Yes, sir, I sure will.
You know, and the amount, the, the amount was, uh...
Uh, twenty-four point three million.
Twenty-four point three million, so, you know, uh, as far as that is concerned, so we can start working on coming up with a, a good, a good expenditure plan for the money that's going to stimulate back our, our community to, before the way it was moving toward the COVID-19, prior to COVID-19.
And it, so you have some preliminary...
Yes, uh, they...
Can you forward?
Yes, we, we'll, we'll send what we have, uh, it's, it's preliminary. It's not the full guidance yet from the treasury, but we'll send what, uh, we, we've received from, um, our local, I mean, our congressman, and, and also, uh, information we received on our, at our office. We'll send that.
Thank you.
I, I think the Senator Corning also has, uh, has some guidelines also.
Yes, sir.
You know, so, you, you do have those, right?
Yes.
You, you can attach those also.
Okay.
And for the, for the council, you know, so we can be able to work. Uh, the, I, the next item that I have is I want to officially welcome Randy Perez, our city manager, back.
Thank you, sir.
From, uh, from his endeavor, you know, welcome back, and, uh, you were missed.
Thank you.
Nobody has told you that.
Yes, thank you, appreciate it.
Just FYI.
I'm sure we still bothered him.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Yes, and thank you for everything you did off, off duty.
Not, not a problem, sir.
I know, I know you work your, you work, uh, very, very hard.
That's okay.
During that time when you were recovering.
Yes, no, thank you, appreciate that.
Get healthy, move though, as soon as possible.
Thank you.
For the, for the benefit of our citizens, uh, mission who you serve, very diligent.
Thank you.
City council, comments, or Ms. Ortega, you have the floor?
Yes, mayor, I just wanted to, uh, tell Mr. Perez and Mr. Belmonte to please, uh, forward a message to their staff. Um, it was so nice to, uh, see on a daily basis our, our city be cleaned up after, um, uh, people were cleaning up the debris with their trees and all of that, and then here recently with a junk cleanup, and I, I'm so excited to know that you all have extended that from March twenty-second to April twelfth. I think that is a nice benefit to our, uh, citizens that, you know, after they do spring cleaning, now that we're in spring, that, uh, our department can go and pick up all of those, uh, possessions and, and get them out of their household, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Plata, you have the floors?
No comments, mayor.
No comment, thank you, Ms. Gassan, you have the floor.
Um, just to check, mayor, are we having a, the tour at three o'clock on Wednesday? Is that still planned?
It's, uh, it's still scheduled, ma'am.
Still scheduled?
If, if everyone's available, yes.
Uh, if...
Three o'clock on Wednesday?
Okay, for the, for part three of the tour?
Part three, yes.
Part three of the tour. Okay?
That's all, for me.
That's it?
Mm-huh.
Mr. Rebel?
No comment.
No comment? Okay, I will entertain a motion under executive session pursuant to VTC A Government Code, section five-five-one-point-zero-zero-one. Do I hear a motion?
No.
We have a motion, do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we are in executive session with a five-oh vote.
In favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries by four oh for the record. Mr. Plata had to leave and he was authorized to leave. So call for thirty A. Mr. Martinez, what do you have?
Yes, sir. Thirty A requires a motion to authorize city manager to continue land research as discussed in executive session.
Do I have a second?
I make a motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On thirty B.
Thirty B mayor with a presentation. It takes, it requires no action.
Okay. Call for thirty one A.
Mayor thirty one A, we need a motion to authorize city attorney to negotiate counter, counter offer as discussed in executive session.
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero for the record. Thirty one B, Mr. Martinez, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Thirty one B is to authorize city managers to continue land research as discussed in executive session.
Move for approval.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero thirty one B. Call for thirty one A.
Thirty two A and thirty two B have been tabled, mayor.
Thirty one, thirty two A and thirty two B have been tabled. Do you require motion to table?
So move, mayor.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you for the time and effort.
Thank you so much, mayor.